Thank you all. We'll begin with our prayer, our allegiance, and most special greetings to you ladies and in vacation.
Our Father God, thank thee for this county that we serve, thank thee for this state that we serve, and God bless our country. We pray that we will be under your guidance and continue to serve the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'll call our regular schedule meeting from May 16, 2016, to order. There is no minutes because it's not set for meeting in a month, but we do have some amendments, agenda amendments, adjustments, excuse me. Under old business, if you will eliminate the session of EMS funding discussion that took place on Thursday, and would place that with Board of Elections. Do I have...
You're going to apply our EMS funding or put that away?
Well, we came to a consensus in our meeting all day, but do you think we need to do it again?
Well, I thought you said something about putting that with the Board of Elections.
No, to strike IEMS and put Board of Elections in its place.
You're going to move the Board of Elections? Right over all the agenda?
Okay, it's in the new business?
Yes.
Board of Elections. Office discussion.
Okay, that wasn't on my agenda.
Okay, I can see, okay. Strike that. We will strike that and we'll keep Board of Elections in the new business. Do I hear, well, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So, second?
Motion's been made, second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Moving on, delegations, unannounced delegations to have in? None. Any unannounced delegations? None scheduled. Administrative reports we have none. We do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. The public hearing, of course, is concerning our budget. At this time, I need a motion to enter a public hearing for the FY '16-'17 budget.
Is it moved?
Second.
Motion's been made, probably second, and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor according to the public hearing for the FY '16-'17 budget. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, okay, ma'am.
I've just distributed a draft version of the 2016-'17 budget ordinance. It does not include any numbers based upon recommendations that will be coming before you later tonight. Once that is approved or disapproved, then we will send you the final numbers for the expenses and for the revenue. Highlighted in the information that you have are new items, and some of them are changes in wording, such as the fee schedule, appropriations to nonprofit and outside agencies. A new law has been added to Section 8 contract authorization and Section 9 for disposal of property.
I'll be talking about how light we've discussed it prior.
No, but last year for Section 3 fees, excuse me, fees have been established under a separate ordinance last year, and it will be attached to this ordinance this year. So that's why it's referenced in that one. Section 5 is a slight change in appropriations to nonprofit and outside agencies. We're requesting that they submit financial statements, which was completely asked for last year, but we are also asking that they provide by March 31, 2017, a report detailing how the funds were used for the citizens of Gates County unless they submit quarterly reports, because I know two of the fire departments submitted quarterly reports.
Can you reply?
Correct, or an additional requirement for the majority of the nonprofits.
And since we have a couple of new nonprofits going on board with EMM and...
For the Section 8 contract authorization, that is just clarifying to everyone that only the county manager has the authority to sign all the contracts. And Section 9 was in a previous budget ordinance about disposal of property, and that would probably be amended to include reference to our policy for disposal of property, because we do have a policy that's part of our procurement policy.
Listen, do we have anyone who'd like to talk about the budget? It's in online, and you can pick up a copy at the county manager's office. Anyone would like to speak to the budget? We're here trying to answer your questions. Seeing no one making their way to the podium.
Okay, I'm going to close up here.
Okay, a motion's been made to close the public hearing on the budget. Don't hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made, probably second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to old business. First item is we have historic courthouse update. We have John from Clearscapes looking at us tonight, and we're pleased to see you for updates about the place that it belongs, the Crow Company and your business.
I'm sure I'll be clear. It's probably hearing for the budget, but still allow the citizens to make comment.
Oh.
And the proposal will be...
If not, so, yeah. We have just had to have John first.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hoffler, it's good to be back. John Zeller over at Clearscapes. You guys have been working with us remotely, if you will, it's been a long time since I've been back, but it's good to see you. Ms. Hoffler, Mr. Owens, Mr. Jordan, you guys have been here since we began on the project five years ago. Mr. Felton and Ms. Freeman, I believe you're relatively new to the process that we began, the conversation, if you will. So just a really quick recap. We did begin this process five years ago, visioning a new future for the courthouse. And along the way, the county decided how they would go forward with the reuse of the property with one sticky wicket, the West Wing. What to do with the West Wing? And so we understood the mission at hand was to take the existing stabilization that had been put in place in the 1990s and do a better job of concealing it, to bring back as much as possible the original appearance of the courthouse since nearly 1845, when those wings were first constructed. In doing so, we were able to acquire the assistance of Anderson Company, our contractor. And in the process of constructing or deconstructing in order to put the additional stabilization in place, we had uncovered a little bit more knowledge about the nature of the wall and its health, if you will. And we had some concerns expressed by the contractor. We took a careful look at that, and as you know, we have been widening the circle of consultation ever since. We always start these projects with historic properties, trying to be very respectful of public funding, anybody's resources in general, whether it is public or private. And so we start based on our body of knowledge, working body of knowledge. We've done 36, 38 tax credit projects in the past and worked with many historic properties. And so we thought we knew what we knew, we thought we had the right people on our team. And when we realized we didn't increase that circle, and we engaged Jack Peet and Restoration Mason from Norfolk, Virginia and Williamsburg area, there's a lot of work there, and he continued to scratch his head, as we have. Then he recommended a conservationist from Charlottesville, and we engaged her. And she again said, this is beyond the experiences that I have encountered in my professional career. And that's how we came along with WJE, the engineers based out of, not Chicago, but in Illinois somewhere. And they are an international company who have a much broader understanding and have a greater reach, if you will, of expertise. And as you've read over the course of the last year, our recommendations, as we've reviewed their proposals, to look into more deeply the conditions of the West Wing, we've recommended that you proceed with their first phase of analysis, which led to the conclusion that some material testing was necessary. They proposed sort of two parts to that. One was, let's look at the nature of the brick today on the West Wing and make sure that there hasn't been some kind of structural degradation over time with the brick. Has there been something that in the environment could have caused the undermining of the health of the brick? We know that for some time the roof was not stable and that water had gotten in. We know that there's some dam creep due to the water sitting at the foundation levels. We know that some of the short-term decisions to purge the interior of the wall could have possibly contributed to holding moisture into the wall. So all these factors go into our thinking about possibly the brick actually having lost some structural strength over time. So along with that, their recommendation was to come back also with identifying a reclaimed brick and testing that brick to make sure that it was compatible with what we have now today on the courthouse. The first presumption on our part was to recommend that you have to know what you've got on the courthouse before you can identify what you are going after with a reclaimed brick. But in conversation with WJE since that recommendation, we learned a little bit more about what the intention is. And that intention is to find the reclaimed brick with a particular structural property which is a broad enough range, as long as they don't exceed certain maximums of expandability and water retention. So what they're looking for is a brick that doesn't act like a sponge and doesn't expand and contract in the freezing thaw. And that means that it will be compatible with what you have on the building today. So we understand better now that we do have to do that additional testing. We're still not sure whether that can be done in two parts, but it's definitely going to be a necessity. However, when talking to Tim since the leading minutes that were shared with you last week, it's been an interesting, we think we have a half step between before we go to testing, or possibly it's done in concert with the testing. And that is, let's do a little research about where the reclaimed brick might come from. If we're going to be sourcing a historic brick, the challenges with that versus finding a new brick that is compatible are different. They might be locally available and they might not. We might have to look for something outside of the tidal water region. We might have to go to Richmond. They might have to go to Iowa. We don't know that yet. What we're looking for is a brick that has undergone the same types of freeze-thaw cycles that are going on in your building today. So probably it's a brick from somewhere north of here, not south of here. That's what we know today. If we can start identifying where those sources could come from, we can start prescribing orders of magnitude costs, because now we know transportation costs, we might have a better number of a range of cost per thousand brick that will be required to procure this brick. We don't have a lot here, but it does have an impact on your budget. What we also discussed today was looking for a brick, possibly over stock from a North Carolina brickmaker who maybe made too many, or somebody only bought half of what they said they would buy, and it's been sitting in their yard now for five, maybe eight years. That's about the timeframe that really things start to get a little easier when using a new brick versus a reclaimed brick. And so if we can identify perhaps a stock that has been aging out in a brick manufacturer's yard, we might be able to give you another option rather than going full-blown reclaim brick and find something that's more local and a little more cost-effective. So that's a suggestion to consider, being that we do a little bit more homework and find out what those orders of magnitude might be that might help guide you in your path towards trying to restore and preserve the West Wing. So I'm here to share that with you, let you know that that's the way we're thinking about how to approach this problem. It is a unique problem. We have, now that we have engaged folks from both North Carolina and Virginia, and now as far as Illinois, who have worked internationally, this is truly demonstrating what a unique challenge we've got here, but also what a unique building we have. We can continue, we will continue to commend you for your patience. This is not an easy thing for a county to endure. Patience is a very important component of that, but with such an important structure for your town, for your county, we applaud you. We continue to be here and support. So I'd like to answer any of your questions and hopefully look for a direction that we can go back and start working on things for you.
Well, how many brick are we covering?
I'm not the cost estimator when it comes to brick, I'm more the unit estimator. I think Tim from WJE was talking about eight, $10,000 brick at the most. It depends on if we're dealing with just the outer width or whether we're going to have to, in certain locations, start to replace the inner widths of the wall. The concern on part of our contractor was that we had some of the interior of the wall on your mind over the years, for whatever reason, and that so you're carving out and having to fill back in at certain places. One recommendation on the part of our structural engineer is that since the fireplace, the chimney crew, is inactive, we could actually fill that with mason ring and gain additional structural integrity without having to put any additional steel structure in place.
Yeah, so you're concerned with the brick, with the new brick, 2016 brick, even if it's the right size?
Mm-hmm.
You're concerned that when the old brick is freezing and thawing along with the new brick, that the mortar in between will come unstated? Is that...
The mortar is critical. We cannot use a contemporary mortar. We want to go with something much softer, like what they would have had back in the 1800s. So that is important. The challenge with the new brick is that it is still undergoing expansion and contraction. Even though it's been kiln-dried and as hard as rock and you don't think it's taking on water, it actually does still move a bit. But, so after about five, eight years, that starts to settle down a bit, and obviously the older the brick becomes, the more stable it becomes, and the less shrinking and swelling it undergoes. So what I was hearing from WJE today was that the, we will see some movement with a five to 10-year-old brick. But the type of movement we're going to see is an eighth-inch crack where there's a juncture between an old brick and a new brick. It's not going to be a one-inch hole that you can stick your finger in and jeopardizes the health of the building or the welfare of an individual engaging the building. The other reality with all of this is that it is an old building and it will require maintenance, and so an eighth-inch joint or an eighth-inch crack could easily be caulked and painted in a regular cycle with the building anyway. So in terms of thinking about what the impact of an occasional crack due to that change might be, we don't think it is necessarily damaging to the integrity of the building visually. We think it will be a part of the building's character ultimately, just like all the existing cracks and patches and whatnot. That's the texture of a historic building. That's what gives some of its charm in a lot of ways. Now, we don't want to have that one-inch crack coming down that entire wall. That's what we're trying to avoid, and that could happen possibly with a newer brick.
But tell about the old brick, you want to have a test on the old brick to determine the composition and where it is, why that has endured.
That's correct. And the reason is, a new brick, if you will, let's call it a five-year-old brick, the new brick, that still has undergone ASTM, modern-day testing, from the American Society of Testing Materials, whereas a reclaimed brick probably was made 1920, 1910, maybe further back, depending on where we might find it. They didn't have those testings in place at that time. So the testing that we would do today would ensure that we don't have a brick that is performing in some unpredictable manner, that we know exactly what we have and that we know exactly how to use it.
Now, WJE has given us some recommended big speeds for the testing, existing brick testing of $2,200, reclaimed brick at $4,400, more testing $2,700, and stucco testing at $27, for a total of about $12,000.
That's correct.
Is what they're talking about. In proceeding with the testing, what do you anticipate being the amount of time to locate these bricks and be ready to have them here and start repair? That's what we're, restoration, that's what we're focused on right now.
That's a very good question, and that's why we proposed the half-step, doing a little bit more research as to learning about what's out there. We do know that there's salvage yards, we do know that they continually get stock in this age of sustainability and recycling. Buildings aren't taken down and put in a landfill anymore. They bring as much as possible to a recycling yard, or they take it to other facilities. So we have to locate those yards that might possibly have stock for us to use with quantities that we need, and then start talking to those folks and finding out what they might have and make sure we have the right quantities. I don't want to get into boring details about the nature of brick and how they used to be made, but for one example, because it might give you a good visual picture, the old kilns that were used in the 19th century and early 20th century were beehive-shaped, and when they stacked the raw clay in there, the outer brick was more exposed to the heat and the inner brick in the cube was less exposed. And so when they came out of that beehive kiln, the masons and the makers knew how to identify the harder brick, which was actually the one fired on the outside closest to the heat, versus the softer brick on the interior of those cubes. Those soft bricks we typically put on the interior of the wall cavity, whereas the harder brick was put on the two faces in order to be more weatherable. And that's the key here, is we want to make sure we have a brick that can weather, even though we have a stucco face on it, it's going to absorb some moisture through that stucco face and have to address that. And so part of identifying the stock is to be able to lay eyes on a cube of reclaimed brick and be able to tell what was face brick, what was a soft interior wall brick, and make sure that we adopt quantities that are available. What we're concerned about is that 50% of the brick that you might be able to buy in the units that you have to buy them in will not be able to be used simply because of the nature of the way in which these are reclaimed. They don't do a lot of sorting. Some facilities do, some don't. And so we want to do a little bit of homework and come back to you with that information so that you might have a better handle on timeline, the cost impact of using a reclaimed brick versus something that is a little younger and might have other implications from a maintenance standpoint, but might be acceptable to the county. So that's the kind of homework we'd like to do before you go ahead with the testing. Now, that being said, the testing is, I think, something that probably needs to be done. We do want to understand more about your mortar, more about your stucco, and more about the brick so that we know that there's not something below any structural minimums that are required. The freeze-thaw cycle that we are concerned about could mean that the brick there is actually failing under its own weight, and that's the one thing we want to confirm is not happening. If that is not happening, then we can proceed with a restoration, a partial restoration, leaving most of the walls intact. If we learn something about the integrity of the brick, that could point us to another solution.
Maybe not 12 months down the road.
I think what we can do in a very quick period of time, a couple of weeks, is identify those sources and get the general sense of impact that a reclaimed brick would have versus a younger brick.
And how long do you anticipate the testing of the bricks that you have, first time to do?
Ms. Rattrick, do you recall that in the proposal there was the timeframe that they quoted?
I don't think, I don't remember the timeframe. Let me check.
I'd have to confirm that with Tim Crow. I don't see his proposal. Yeah, I don't think it's in agreement.
I think it's agreeable that we allow Clearscapers to do that investigation and that sorting out, you know, the feasible places, see what you've got, see what kind of inventory's out there.
I think that's a good move. I think WJE has a lot of reach with their expertise, and I'd like to lean on them a bit and see if they can help us identify sources and also work with James Andrews, with Anderson, who's our contractor, so that we can work as a team. I think all three of us together will be able to be very effective and learning a lot in a very short period of time.
Anyone else have a comment or question? So at this time, do we need a motion to authorize Clearscapes to look for what inventory is available? And we've already done the WJE.
But the WJE proposal was not to test reclaimed brick, it was just to test the brick that's at the courthouse currently. It's what you had approved.
Okay, but we're looking for inventory now to, we've got to find inventory before we can test, not the reclaimed brick.
Correct. It depends on your timeline. I know you're in the middle of approving a new budget. One approach that I've seen communities do is approve up to that limit so that your staff has the capability of pulling the trigger when the time is right. There may be a need to look at the impacts to your contractor's existing contract. I'm not sure if we are, if that's been completed or if there's a little bit of lingering resources there that might be able to be moved over also to assist once we understand how much heavy lifting he will be doing, so to speak, with funding the brick. So that's something to just think about in terms of your budget planning. I would recommend that at the very least, approve the testing, the full range of testing, and if we find that you choose not to do it all, that money just stays with the county.
I think that's all we approved, but I haven't felt that.
But I was not authorized to do the 12,000 testing. I was authorized for the 7,200, which was only the analysis of the brick, the mortar, and the stucco.
Well, that's a warranty of the break.
We need the mortar, we've got to make sure that that is, not, the failures are not in the mortar part either.
That's correct. You need to know about what you have today. You do need to know about what you have today. What you will eventually, what you might possibly choose to do is, once we find what sources of reclaimed brick are out there, you may choose to then take that next step and confirm the material properties of that brick with the additional testing. So, that's why I'm thinking in terms of the funding cycle and the meeting cycle, is it more efficient for the county to go ahead and approve up to the full amount of the proposal with the understanding that the county may not proceed with the reclaimed brick testing should our research about availability prove out that that's not going to be feasible for a budgetary system?
Costs might not be any in reclaimed brick, I believe, in the quantities that you need.
Or it might be astronomical in cost. We might find that, you know, it's a dollar a brick and, when most brick is 33 cents, and that's just too expensive for everyone to work with the budget that we have. I'm not sure exactly where we are with the.
What was, we're showing 12,000 here, what did you approve?
The motion was to ask WJE to proceed with mortar, stucco, and existing brick testing for $7,600. And that is the motion that passed. That passed at the beginning of the first meeting in April.
More existing brick, more and stucco.
Yes, sir.
And the reclaimed brick is $4,400. So, that's an additional $4,400 that you would be looking at.
If they can find.
If they can.
And there are things out there, the question. I believe that we will find something, the question is, will we find something that fits your budget? I think that's the research that I feel is important that we do in order to protect your resources.
Well, since, you know, we don't have to approve, you're going to come back to us and let us know what is out there, at that particular time, we can authorize the additional cost for testing the reclaimed brick.
If that syncs up with your meeting schedule and your need to approve that formally, that's fine, that works for us.
I would.
Would we meet monthly and then some months, twice a month?
I would, I would prefer to wait, as soon as that information is available and given a pick and actual whether or not it's feasible to move forward, you know, based on cost and what's available out there, at that particular time, we can.
Excellent.
I'm in, but.
Very good, we're happy to do that.
Because we've already done the motion for WJE, for the brick, mortar, and stucco testing.
Do you need to authorize clear escapes or not to?
We need authorization of clear escapes to search for. Okay, I need a motion to authorize clear escapes to begin to search, to see what type of reclaimed materials are out there.
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion, that we authorize the clear escape to move forward and identify reclaimed brick that's suitable for use in the old courthouse restoration.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman. Also, I wonder, in addition, if.
The motion's been made, so tonight we can ask your questions.
That'd make us pretty of those areas that you find reclaimed brick or the aged brick if you would.
You would like to know where those sources are? Absolutely. If we can identify multiple sources, that's our goal, so that we have choices. Ultimately, we want to give you guys the choice to pick, even if it's the same price and one's in Richmond and one's in Iowa, we want you to be able to pick where it's coming from.
Transportation costs would make a difference.
Well, that's, that's the key right here, is it could the transportation cost alone be the thing that makes your breaks a decision?
Okay, a motion is on the floor. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Here now, the motion is that we authorize clear escapes to identify brick, reclaimed brick that could possibly be used in the old, of the historic courthouse. Okay, all of those voters say aye. All opposed. And thank you, but you got a safe during that.
Thank you much, it was a pleasure seeing you all this evening.
I've actually been here five years, I might look like I've painted a building, but I've only been here four.
You started with the, with the Historic Courthouse group?
Yeah, yes, and I was with that.
You were with us on that side. Take care, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, senior citizen, senior in our discussion. Mr. George, are you doing that?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I did request that we bring that discussion back to the board. We had some information from the Major Development Task Force Committee, and they gave us some options. Some of those options were the various buildings in the county, one of them being B, we have included your gates, um, community center, and also the dental offices in New Orleans. So, I just need, we need to make, we need to give the Agent of the Task Force some direction as to what we're going to do. And I'd just like to have that discussion as to what is the field of the board, how to move forward with it.
Okay. You may.
I just drew two dollar signs here on the specific. And I notice quite a few things that are out there pending, concerned about schools. I think the timing of the senior center is not real good for our budget. I'm a bit concerned about taking any money out of the general fund to make any purchases or anything like that. I think that, you know, I don't want to give them any, any false hope. I don't know when the right time will occur, but I do have some concerns over that. The county owns the dental building. Haven't been out there and looked at that building, and while Jim's is, is not taking into question for anybody who knows, how much space has Jim's taken up?
They have that one, when you walk into the lobby, they have the, the straight in front of you.
Where the lab was, the doctor's office, and several of its rooms behind the side there. If I recall, when the presentation was made, I know the state has some requirements of bike size and all, the dental office was not large enough in square footage, is that, wasn't that correct?
I have to ask, 4,000 square foot, and I don't believe it by itself, I think we would have to use tailored policies along with that.
And I know there was problems with square footage on a couple of them. And I do say, you know, this year's kind of been a tough year, we've got EMS that, that we plan to have.
New line item.
A new line item. We have schools, of course, on, in the, still on the horizon. And, you know, it's, they say, I don't, I just don't see that we have enough money at this, this year.
Well, it's, we owe them the respect to be very candid with them. And, I mean, if we could give them a timeframe, I'd be particularly give them a timeframe. I don't think any of us individually or as a group knows what that timeframe could be. We certainly need to report back to them, they've done a good job in their research. And, and one of the things I don't see us do, our seniors deserve a nice quality facility to do that. And I don't want to do anything halfway. I'm not talking about the project, but it needs to be something that they can be proud of. I don't believe there's a good 4,000 square foot building, even if we said we could end this in 12 months by leasing the building, I don't think the building is suitable for us to lease, if we start that with the lease. Anybody know such a thing?
Well, my thoughts on this would be that I agree with everything you said, but we've got a lot of things on our plate. We've got potential of a new school, we have built a senior building school. We have the in that situation, which is an additional tax increase. I would look at, looking at what we have already that's a potential and that's a good option. And that, to me, would be the Sunbury School. I talked with the hatches today, and they let me know that the proposal to move forward with the senior apartments is still viable, they are securing funds, they've got some approval of funds, nearly 7%, I believe 80% they, they had to get to get approval for to start a project. And it just seems to me that a senior center at a senior apartments and that gym would be the most feasible place. You know, I know the East County Community Center is probably the central location, but we're going to have to buy additional land, we're going to have to construct a building. The land itself is approximately $350,000. Then you've got the construction costs, I think we've looked at the topic probably a million plus, somewhere close to a million and a half dollars, we're going to have to invest, including county personnel, we have to put someone in charge there. So, I think if we could direct the, any of that adult task force to get with the hatches and see where they are in moving forward with senior apartments and look at that budget again, of what that gym, what it would be to use the gym as a senior center. I think that would be something we could move forward with, we wouldn't have to tap in funds right now, it would be something usable for the county, and it would be certainly very much less than what we're going to incorporate now and try and put a senior center at one of the other locations that's been proposed as the most feasible, as far as central location. I think that's what the board was looking at last time, is we want something centrally located. And if you take Sunbury, you know, it's, it's not centrally located, but it's within 10 to 12 miles of anywhere in East County, 15 and above, so we're not talking very near drive, it's relatively close. So, I think that would be the, in order, instead of saying, you know, right now, let's just put it on the back burner, let's get back with the, with the hatches and see where they are and see if we can get a proposal together with them and bring that back to us and see if that's something we can work with.
If I may, I thought that they had made a proposal to the adult, Agent of the Adult Services Task Force, and that was not one of the top three recommendations because of leasing issues, number one. And then I believe, if I remember correctly, based on meeting I attended and as well as documents, that that was not an option they wanted to pursue, and I did not bring that information with me.
That was, that was not a top priority for the Agent of the Adult Task Force committee, one of the things that you just said, that, you know, would be a lease option. But the alternative that we have by family is that we're not in a position to move forward with budgeting, to provide construction or undertake some of the other buildings, you know, to move forward with it. So, if we revisit that, we can see what is workable with the hatches. They did have a proposed budget that, that budget was, I thought was fairly reasonable, but as you pointed out, it did come up that a lease option is, you know, after 30 years, they could say, hey, you know, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to lease, but then, you know, you have clauses in there to tie the tax back, you know, so it is ongoing. But, you know, at this point, it looks like a senior apartments is going to happen, it looks like we've got a gym out there that could be used, and why not take advantage of it at the lowest possible cost that we can? And I think that's a, that's a reasonable approach to moving forward, and instead of just letting it die some street for right now, because currently I don't really see how we can do it unless we put an additional burden on the, on the county that we probably don't want to do right now.
Well, it's not exactly like the, the leading the senior citizens kind of drive. We have the concrete meals at the community center, and the community center does have activities for them. I know they do crafts on some days, they're, have a movement class on some days, they do do things. And if you look at some of the old counties in the state, basically that's what their senior citizens center, a lot of the activities are, you know, they're not 24/7 type of And, you know, concerning Sunbury, I'd kind of like to see something going, I certainly would like to see something happen later, but I'd like to see something happening before we get involved.
Well, I have, I've gone and looked at some senior centers, and the places I've been to look, some of them actually were not senior centers, but they were community buildings, but owned by either the town or the county. So, I've gone out there to attempt to see some places. And of the places I've seen, and I've actually been in that gym since we, since the senior committee started their research. Of course, I was familiar with it anyway, but on a, on its best day, I don't see that property coming up to par or the standards that I'm hoping for. And the things that I've looked at when I was there structurally, I mean, you're talking about seriously tall ceiling in there, there are no, there are no facilities, bathroom facilities that are up to standards by a large stretch. And one of, one of my concerns, you know, I don't like to talk about people's business, but we do, I have to take in consideration that I don't see anything happening there. And I don't see any effort from them to maintain the property or put any effort to start taking some things away and cleaning it up. So, I, I would have to, I appreciate you going forward, but I would have to disqualify them with what I see in current.
Well, and let me just address that, and that's the reason I got in touch with them. First thing I asked them, was still an option? And they responded to the email, they said, "Option to rent 1,000 square foot inside the gym center, Sunbury, at an affordable price for the senior center is still open." And they're always ready to cooperate. And then I asked them, what was, what was the status of the current project development moving forward? And they said, "About the school, our original plan of developing the school and constructing three blocks of new two-bedroom apartments, original construction cost four point four million dollars had changed to a phase one of less than forty units using only the school's building. This way, we managed to get an approval on funding. We were requested to manage twenty percent, which we did. And a couple of months ago, we've been requested more cash liquidity to keep them bank during the whole process. We managed to get seventy percent of that last month already. However, in the meantime, our original developer had found another financing source that seems to be more suitable to less than one hundred units that will be less expensive in lawyers and admin fees than the current one that works better with more than one hundred units for development." So, you know, while I agree with the fact, you know, I've observed property and certainly it's, it is not a period we kept, you know, in a way that we would like it. But certainly once the funding starts coming in, it's a new ballgame. And it appears that's, that's been the holdup, is trying to get funding to move forward. That is quite a large tract. It's approximately eight acres. And if you don't, you don't have the equipment or, or if you're not someone in the county that has that kind of, kind of connection and pride, so to speak. I'm not saying that you don't, but probably sometime though, the way that we want ours to. So, you know, they've got the funding stream coming in place. I'm just saying that we give the Agent Adult Task Force Housing Committee the opportunity to contact the Hatches, see what it's gonna take to have a senior center there. Not saying that we would put it there, but find out what the nuts and bolts are, what the cost's gonna be. And once they start moving forward, then we could move forward with it. The body that's within the budget that we're looking for is within that cost. You know, I cannot see them putting several million dollars in the restoration of that school and not keeping it up and not maintaining it the way that it should be. So, you know, it's not a commitment for funds, but it is an option in moving forward. It seems feasible to me because if you're gonna have senior partners there, that's where it's gonna be. And certainly, you know, the combinations could be there. I mean, it's gonna take some restoration. I don't know if they're gonna put proper ceilings anywhere, but to me, it's probably gonna be, it could be as good as kids' center, of course, it's much older than that, but it could be if they did proper restoration.
Well, if we would give them the authorization to look into it, would that give it the illusion that funding, we are going to be funding it? I mean...
Madam Chairman, I would, I agree with what you and Jackie both said. Jack brought out a phrase there, giving false hope. I think that's what you're referring to right now. And we know realistically, financially, it's not gonna happen no time soon. We know that, so we need to give them false hope like it's going to be. We have no money. It's not gonna happen. And it's not like we're cutting out senior citizens. We have community centers to do the thing. We have churches that have a senior program at least once a month. We have the Roolington Club, the Hall Roolington Club, that does one on a periodic, periodic basis. Their senior programs are all available all over the county. But I don't think it's a good idea to give false hope right now that we're gonna, we're ready to fund it. We don't have the money to fund it.
Again, you know, if you don't want to give false hope, then what is, what is the alternative? I mean, we're just gonna put it on the, what, you know, are we denying? Anything to move forward with it? Or you need to tell them something. Like I say, if that was the, that's an option. But of course, this is board and whatever, the majority says, and that's what we remember.
And, Natalie, was there any, did they speak to the committee? Did they speak to any source of funding, grants, anything?
No, the only grant is once you become certified and there's state funding. I think Laura Alberich identified it as nominal funding. I would say fifteen hundred, but that was also dependent on budgeting here.
I think we did contact our legislators, who have been funded. And they were looking to that hundred thousand dollar seed money, but I've never anything back from them.
Well, it's on our agenda that we're on discussed senior center. I think we need to, so that's public knowledge. Members that are on that committee will know that we're discussing. Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we respond to the committee telling them that we're not gonna take any, any action at this time and table the matter and report back to them in ninety days. That's motion.
Okay, a motion has been made to take no action at this time and table the motion for ninety days. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion has been made and seconded in the discussion. My question is, ninety days, what's gonna happen in ninety days?
It's a committee that has worked and labored. They may take upon themselves to look at this video and and look harder for money, look for newer ideas. And in the meantime, in ninety days, nothing's changed. And I don't expect a whole lot to change on our part. But I do want to take this report or the idea of the senior center and throw it in the trash, is what I'm saying. I would like for our citizens to have senior centers when the time is appropriate for the budget.
In all discussion, here and on, we'll have a call to the board, all those. This motion's been made and properly settled to take no action at this time, or senior center.
Yeah, just so we can clear, Madam Chairman. If you go back to the Agent Adult Task Force, this ninety days, you're not required to bring anything, you're not asked to bring anything back to the board. I know you said, Jackie, maybe they'll go look for, see if they can find some other funds, but I don't want that committed. And, you know, as far as finding funds, I think that those avenues have been exhausted. They presented to the commissioners, numbers, pages, and presentations and research. And the most feasible places have been presented and cost and all that. I would like to see the board direct instructions for the committee if we're, if we're gonna revisit it in ninety days. I would see the motion as, you know, take no action at this time. We'll revisit the issue in ninety days if that's the case. Or if we want to tell them to do something. What do we want them to do? My proposal was to have them to look at the Sunbury School and see if that's something we want to bring back. And, you know, obviously, the consensus is that we don't want to provide any false hope with the Sunbury School. So we're just gonna sit tight? Or are you telling them to, if you find the money? I mean, I just think it needs to be clear so that there's, you know, a degree of integrity into what we're doing.
So we're in discussion.
Correct.
If they find a million and a half dollars, I would say, yeah, we can talk again. And I'm being real west of here.
And, you know, the Buckland Plantation, they were gonna restore that and make that into a senior center and at no cost in the county. And we were real pleased with that. But when they went to their board of directors, somehow they couldn't fund it. So that came off the table, if you recall. So, you know, getting a senior center is unlikely, it's out there. I guess what we're hearing is that if you want a senior center, Agent Adult Task Force, then you need to find a way of funding, basically what you're saying. If that's within ninety days, or if you don't find it in ninety days, then it's off the table.
Jackie, would you be willing to remove the ninety days and just table it until your brother comes?
I certainly will.
I would suck at your, I mean, your motion, but if you would.
Well, I think, from my perspective, it's gonna be expensive to take. And certainly, I mean, we need to thank our senior citizens. But at this time, we just don't have the money. And we're not gonna have the money in ninety days. Yeah, we're not gonna have the money during this budget year. And I don't believe in giving people false hope. Let's tell it like it is. We don't have the money. And until we, because we got revamped, we don't have that sponsorship, guys. We have the EMS that we have to fund and the school is the limit. I think we've got enough variables in there that we need to wait until next year, at least.
The reason I put the ninety days in there was not for them to report anything, but to let them know that if they ever see anything new. And I do realize I wasn't requiring them to report to us. But I didn't want to say, we don't want to hear back from them.
Well, I'm not saying that either.
Sure, I understand, but I'm just, so, Madam Chairman, I withdraw my motion as presented.
Okay, the second concurs?
So, Mr. Jordan, I want to send the proper message. And I, I don't think there is money out there that's readily available and easy to find for a facility right now because of what we know when we're looking for grants, there's not a lot of fresh money out there. Boy, if they found it, that'd be fantastic. But I'm not excited. I won't be excited about the Sunbury project. The location doesn't concern me. And I can't get excited about that until I see some activity, positive activity. So...
How about if, in, I say in the next six to twelve months, if there is positive activity at Sunbury School where you see some action taken, positive actions, maybe some of the board, they would take another look at it, if they saw activity that showed promise. But right now, there's nothing happening right now. But, you know, I agree with you. They're often insecure and obviously something should be happening. I can't say how soon.
You're talking about a facility that we would not own, that we would have the control.
Well, you would, you would not be maintaining it. You'd be leasing it from the facility. And you'd be operating the facility. But you wouldn't have the cost of construction and maintenance. And that part of the biggest cost you would have would be the lease fee, which could be minimal and it costs more than forty.
Our county's plan, and this is one of the first things I look at, because when we had conversation the other day about the gunshot, remember, the first thing I mentioned was parking. Our county plan is gonna require them to have X number of parking spots. And where that church is located, acreage, for parking alone does not exist.
Well, there's a park behind it.
Well, yes.
But, you know, let's, you know, if something happens that is positive, we certainly at any time can revisit it.
Well, that's good.
You know, I mean, we, I mean, nothing would be a given, but, um... Go ahead. I'm just saying that if something were to occur, I think all of us would reach and revisit. But to give a signal to the Agent Task Force at this time, I think probably would be that we're not taking any action at this time. We, our county force, tell future, it could be, everything, you know, things could drop in, we can save money, grant money, do not...
Well, let me remind, let me remind the board, please, that the Sunbury School was sold on a condition that would be restored within ten years. And it's been possibly six or seven years. You've only got three years left. And guess what? It becomes our headache once again, this fourth year. So it's not like you're dealing with property that's saying, hey, if somebody else cannot do anything. It's property that, and they, they have to restore that school to the historical significance or else it reverts back. It goes back to preservation. Preservation brings it back to us. So it's, we still have a heart and interest in that school. As a board, it's not like that we just force ourselves on it. So I just keep that in mind, you know, that's the way it was sold. It was sold that way. And if they don't do anything, then we've gotta deal with it all over again. So...
Madam Chairman, I make the motion that we table the matter.
Do I hear a second to the motion? Okay, a motion has been made that we table the discussion on senior citizens, so it ain't part of the discussion.
So, how long can I table it?
Well, by law, it's got to be tabled. You can come back up for ninety days. Is that right? Is that right, ma'am? It can't be brought back up for ninety days if you table it. Quite simple. It means somebody can't come to the podium.
I agree with you. We're gonna table it, but no time limit.
That's a motion that has been made and properly signed. All people might have different ideas, but it's...
I think we should have some time, you know, about six months or what, to revisit. Because if you just table it, when are we gonna, we gotta wait, huh?
That's what I was trying to do, can wait. Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I want to admit my motion that we table it and revisit again.
This is Mary.
Excuse me, thank you. In November, second meeting in November. Do we have to meet these other things?
Okay, but let me see, does you...
I withdraw my second one.
Okay, he withdraws his second. Do we have, so the motion that you want now is to table it to November of 2016?
Second meeting.
Second meeting. Do I have a second to that?
It's not a second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, in a discussion.
I think around that time, we can see what progress Sunbury School makes. And at that time, you know, the aging adult task force, they can look at other options and even reconsider on their own, not in the direction of the board, but have something made to reset back, if there's sufficient progress being made that it will, as it was peaceful.
Okay, any other comments? Here are none, we'll vote on the matter. And the motion before us to take no action at this time on senior center until, we'll table it for, until November 2016, a second meeting. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, okay. Okay, Stony Lane.
I was asked last time, we were asked to put this on the agenda again for discussion.
It does not come, does it come out in DOT standards?
I do, I mean, that's not for us to determine, that's for the property owner to determine and fill out the paperwork and return it to DOT for DOT to make the final decision.
Well, has that been done, contacted?
No, because you first told me to send a letter, and then you said, hold on, we're going to discuss it.
Because he'd already been contacted.
Correct, so the letter was not sent.
So we don't have anything? It's good, I think what we wanted to do was give him a call and let him know that if he feels that paperwork, to get it to us.
It doesn't come to us.
It comes to us, because of DOT. He's got two. Because it's already been denied one time by DOT.
No, it was, he never submitted that information to DOT.
Like Commissioner Orange was saying last time, we have some interest in that project. And certainly, you know, to let him know that the board is ready to discuss it. And if he feels that the paperwork can move forward, and that's the intent, kind of manages to give him a call. And move forward with that. Because, you know, we've got a library out there, we've got a senior center, and... Potentially, we've got a restaurant coming, so.
It's not our responsibility, I realize it's not our responsibility, we don't, we don't own that road. But it is in the best interest of the county. If that road be up to state standards, it would improve traffic to our library and would enhance the property. We're not talking about spending any money on doing this. And it's up to him to get it up to par so it can be done. But I would like to, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with our county manager calling him and saying that there's been some discussion at board that, about county taking that road over, which certainly would be in favor.
No, state.
The county does not maintain.
State maintains.
But I mean, I would want him certainly to be in favor of that.
Okay, so you just want to direct county manager to contact him, but the ball is in his court. He's got, he's got to do the, he's got to do the work.
Right. That didn't come through us.
Well, we did have to do a resolution, but you do that according to what I can tell once that application is completed.
You have to complete that new application. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that the county manager is directed to contact Al Carey, the owner, and let him know that the commissioners discussed taking over it, or the discussed pursuing the state to take over the maintenance of the Stony Lane. And that he would need to complete the paperwork necessary to have the state start an action. Let that come, the county can move forward and support it.
What did you say at the very beginning, the first part?
That we direct county manager to contact Al Carey, the landowner, the owner, and let him know that the board of commissioners has discussed the state maintaining the Stony Lane. He would need to fill out the paperwork and submit it to the state for us to do any supporting action.
What do you mean by county supporting him?
By issuing a resolution. I think a resolution, I'm not sure all of it, what it says, but I think the basic concept is is that county's in agreement.
I have it, it says, "Whereas the attached petition has been filed with the county, Board of County Commissioners at the county of, I think it's on the blank, requesting that the above described road, the location of which is indicated in red on the attached map, be added to the secondary road system. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners gives of the opinion that the above described road should be added to the secondary road system if the road meets minimum standards and criteria established by the Division of Hottways of the Department of Transportation for the addition of roads to the system."
That does the supporting action, but the new petition states first.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Jordan has made a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion made a second and in a formal discussion. And the motion is to regret county manager to contact property owner concerning applying, filling out an application for, if he ordered me, Stony Lane become part of the secondary road system.
Was it just, my question is, is it just Stony, or is it all the roads out there? Because there's two other roads beside Stony. Cypress Creek, which is the one from the library, and then, I might have the right numbers, the one right there in between Creed and the Assistant Living.
I think she included all of them. Before we include all of them, you better do some research on wanting to fund the library, because it does not exist.
No, it was not on the map.
There's no map that's recorded anyway that shows that road. And then, there are no, there's no paperwork that ever says that road is there.
It's basically a driveway, so.
It's not even a driveway, no.
I might have been discussing, just a comment, just for county manager and certainly for the rest of us to know, in terms of citizens. But I think DOT has addressed this matter somewhat, not by petition, but I think for fire departments and for EMS, that they do not expend any money.
Well, then, you know, they put the in their hands, accept or reject, or whatever.
Yeah, just a comment.
Okay. A motion has been made a second, and do you want to change the motion to include the whole of Commerce Drive and reject it, and put in, what do you want to do about it? What is the vote applied for?
Cypress.
Cypress.
I think I do need to read this letter before we go over it.
So, who addressed it?
Mr. Al Carey. Date of date, twenty, two thousand fourteen, it says here, it's from Edel County Manager Ken Lindley. Dear Mr. Carey, I met yesterday with NC DOT officials concerning taking over your existing roads at Merch's Commerce Center. They need, or the following to be done before I can take a petition to the county commissioners for addition to the state secondary road system. Vegetation along most of the shoulders needs improving through receipt. I think we did that, did we? Ditches need cleaning out along portions of the roads, and not all right of ways are recorded. You can fill out a form to fill it out in my office. That may be what, you know, the reminder, and see if he's done those things. If the motion would include this letter as well, or the contents of that from the previous contacts.
When did they make?
May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, two years ago.
Well, certainly, there's nothing they record since then.
The original motion, the original motion is just to get in touch with it.
Yeah, just to get in touch with it.
And I think, and we did state Stony Lane in there. It could be that the other two roads could be too much at one time.
Well, I'm finally able to understand that it has to be.
Okay, so are we ready?
Madam Chairman, I'll call the vote.
Okay, the motion before us is to regret county manager to contact property owner about Stony Lane and the application for, to, for state to take part in the secondary road system. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on.
Will I copy this now?
No, sorry, I have the copy.
Okay, anybody need a stretch break?
We heard.
Okay, we'll do five minutes. Okay, at this time, we'll start with the new business, and our first items is the nuisance ordinance. And I believe Mr. Carver, I see you stick your back.
Madam Chairman, and Commissioner. Some of you don't probably know me that well, but I've been your codes enforcement officer now for about a year. And I spent thirty years in the law force before that. And I'll tell you that codes enforcement has become quite a challenge. And part of the reason is the frustration of getting compliance. I had one piece of property in particular I dealt with for over a year, trying to get it cleaned up. Sent them the fines, notice of fines, going by, talking to them, getting them into office. We never collected the first dime, they never cleaned it up. So I went and to the magistrate to obtain the criminal summons, and brought him to criminal court. And the judge says that according to our ordinance, we can't charge a criminal anymore. Because in our ordinance, it says that under section eighty, civil penalty, any person who is found in violation of this chapter should be subject to civil penalty. And then it goes on, and at the very bottom, it says that any abatement in accordance with this provision is governed by GS one fifty-three A one twenty-three. And under the general statute, one fifty-three A one twenty-three, it says under B, unless the board of commissioners has provided otherwise. That one little statement right there, because in our ordinance, it says that we will, in order to enforce our ordinance, we will do a civil. We'll take them to civil court, or we will go in, and in our ordinance, it says that we can go in and clean the property up and bill the owner on their tax rate. Now, all of that takes money. And as I've heard tonight, that's not an option. So we've either got to come up with funding to clean these properties up when people refuse to do it, and attach it to their taxes, or we need to have the ordinance rewritten so that it can be charged criminally and make it a criminal violation, and then the criminal courts can hold them content if they don't do it. If we file a civil case against someone, we have to pay for that. County has to file civil papers, we have to pay for the filing of the papers, we have to file, we have to pay to have all that even the guns brought before the court, before any ruling, and then have to be tried in a civil, in the civil courts, to get a civil judgment. Now, when you get a civil judgment, you still only have a judgment. There's really, it's, and Mr. Freeman can tell you, civil courts are the whole, civil, the civil side of society is a whole different ballgame than what we're used to in criminal side. Then you, once you get the judgment, then you got to collect. And it can, it can take you years to collect. But in our case, we can put it under taxes. But then again, it could be foreclosure on the property or the sale of the property before you get your money back. My suggestion, and what I think would be very helpful, is that we take, the board take, and look at the ordinance, not only the nuisance ordinance, but if you, if you look at our ordinance, we have the nuisance ordinance, we have the junkyard ordinance, we have the junk car ordinance, we have, and it would be very helpful, and again, this is going to take a little bit of money, if we could codify all of these ordinances together. Instead of having a planning ordinance and a this ordinance and that, we could have them all codified into one gates candy ordinances, and have them govern that. Would be much more helpful, I thought. And the manager, I think, the county manager and the planner actually looked into this at one time, what the cost would be. But at that time, if you address all the ordinances, then we could make the provision of it being a criminal offense, as opposed to being a civil offense. I serve at your pleasure, and do what you want, but it's, I know that many of you have had situations where you've asked me to go see people, and I go and talk to them, I send them letters, certified letter, after certified letter, go by there and talk to them. And I, I don't have any teeth, that's the problem. I don't have any way to force to make them do what we need done. We can't, I don't have the money and the budget to say, it's not done, we're going to file these papers, we're going to clean it up, and then you're going to hose. So I just need some direction.
Certainly, we all have received both calls from neighbors and friends telling us about properties that need clearing up, and we have repeat offenders. They might do a little bit, and then you see the lawnmower's still in the front yard, and the backyard is growing up. Now, the lawnmower in the front yard, you can't see.
Yeah, that's the property I'm talking about.
Yes, it's near me. So I am really, would like to see us do something to help you carry out your duties.
What kind of funding you think needs, ten thousand dollars, fifteen thousand?
Well, the thing is, is that once we start this, it's, we've got to keep it up. And there's a lot of offenders out there, and a lot of people that just refuse to, I'm just having a couple of breaths, and a lot of these, some of these are foreclosures. We have houses out here, nobody lives there, but they own the property. They live in Florida. And they, by record, they still, I mean, they're not going to come clean it. We've got one, that we've actually got a tree growing through the front porch. I mean, I don't know how much it would take to clean up all the properties that we're talking about. But, I mean, ten thousand dollars probably wouldn't even really get us started yet.
But you're talking about, if we do it criminally, we, of course, if we bring them to court, they're fined, they have to, would have to pay.
Well, there, and there's another thing, there's another situation between criminal and civil. Under the civil penalty, if you own a piece of property and you rent it, the renter refuses to do anything, I have to hold you, the owner, responsible. Because you own the property, you're the only one we can collect from. We can't collect from the renter, we have to collect from the owner, under the civil side. If it's criminal, and they willfully don't do it... If it's criminal and they willfully don't do it, then it can be, they can be charged criminally for not, and there, different towns do it different ways. Some cities have it as a criminal ordinance, some people have it as a civil. Um, so it can be done either way. I'm sure it's going to do, it takes a discussion with the county attorney or the county attorney on exactly how to work.
But the criminal ord, uh, ordinance or criminal provision, you would still have a fine.
Right, but it would be collecting criminally.
Right.
But through the criminal courts, and they wouldn't come to the county, it would go to the courts.
So, county manager would, would instruct sheriff to take action and deliver a warrant?
No, I could go to, I could go to the magistrate, obtain a warrant, and the, and the sheriff would serve it.
And then the fines, where they go to, they go to court?
Yes, unless there's a provision, there can be some provisions in the ordinance that the fine, that some fines come to back into the general fund, but that has to be done through the wording of the ordinance. Like, the county attorney would be the one to sort that out.
Would the, would the court make the person pay restitution? Or would we just bill them court on their tax bill?
Would we do it civilly?
No, criminally.
Criminally, they either do it or they're going to contend and they get put in jail. And I know that sounds hard to be put in jail by cutting grass, but that's how, that's how the criminal system works.
Well, how civilly? We can put it on our tax.
Right, but you have to pay to have it cleaned up first, and it may take you until the property's sold to get your money back.
Well, we can take up a billion now. I mean, uh, you have the, the ordinance specifying that, you know, that, uh, if they don't clean it up, they're fined.
It, it, that, it already does that, but they don't pay the fine.
But the issue is, excuse me, the issue is, civil method doesn't give them any teeth.
All I can do is keep filing.
Yeah, but they can ignore.
But it's going to be, it's going to be made a lien on their property.
Not until it goes through the civil court.
And we spend the money?
Well, can't the civil court, won't they uphold that?
Yes, they, they will uphold it, but again, you're talking about if, if they put a lien against their property, some of these properties have been in families for hundreds of years, they're not sold, you can't collect liens to the property so.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, 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 we've got properties like that, but, uh, the matter is, it puts the county in a position now whether that property is going to be foreclosed on to collect the taxes and the lien. So, we'll eventually get the money.
Agreed.
If somebody's going to lose it if they don't take action.
That's right. But, but on the other hand, you've got to have a, we have to have funding to get to that point. That, that's the other side of this point. To, in order to take the report, in order to get the property cleaned up, we've got to have a, a lot item that allows us to take that money to do that.
And what I'm saying is, can't we bypass, clean it up? In other words, you go out there, you give them a letter, you've got thirty days, they don't have thirty days, the next letter says that if you're not paid, that you're going to, you're going to be going to court because we're going to take out, uh, injunction or whatever on you for not cleaning it up. No, we're not going to clean it up as a county.
We could do that, but you still haven't got the property cleaned up.
Well.
That's, that's the place we are now.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at.
And what I look at is, people, people keep looking at me, I've had people call me over the same property. And I, and when I tell them, I'm doing all I can do, you know, I'm doing, I'm filing them. First fine is fifty dollars, the second fine's a hundred fifty dollars, then it goes, the maximum is five, you can't charge any more than that.
Let me ask a question, so, taking the example you just gave, fifty, a hundred, five hundred, you cited those people with those three, have they paid any?
Not a dime.
Okay, so now let me go back and ask, let's go back to the criminal, let's, let's chop that half.
Okay.
Okay. So you get a complaint, you go check the property, knowing that our new rules are we're going to go the criminal route, you go send them a letter, you're going to give them thirty days to find, what are you going to do after that?
If they don't clean it up, then we will go to the magistrate and get a warrant.
Okay, so they don't get a second letter, you'd recommend?
We can, we can process it however you want, we can process it to get two letters.
So what would you, what would you recommend, what's a remedy, do you think?
Well, I, I think they need to know upfront that if you don't do it within this time, it's going to go before the criminal court and not the civil court.
So maybe we give them thirty days, and then in the second letter, we tell them that at the end of thirty days, it's going to be a criminal warrant served on them by the sheriff, and they'll be forced to come to the court. So, when they come to the court, now, this is the tricky part, tell me what you think's going to happen when they come before the judge?
Well, the criminal judge can tell that you have this number of days to clean it up and, and, and charge them a fine, but depending on how our ordinance is written about the fine, at the end of that time, if it's not done, they'll be held in contempt. If you're held in contempt of court, then you go to jail. So that's where the difference is. They, they, there's some penalty, and that doesn't cost us a dime.
Okay, so let me, now let me, let me speak to Mr. Freeman if I may. Is the judge going to laugh at us and say, what are y'all bringing this in here for?
No, it'll depend on some of the, uh, you know, what the document looks like. But it'll be handled by the district attorney and then to the judge. And the fines, Mr. Carver knows and we all know, when the fines are assessed, sometimes they might be a lie about the judge in front of who they are to pay one dollar a year. As long as they do that in the clerk's office, that would be suffice, and that would be me, with, uh, the judge.
But what I'm concerned, I don't want to see some of our elder citizens not able to keep up their property. Bring them into court because the grass is not good, debris is collecting. I think what I would rather see, uh, fine them from a civil standpoint, bring them to court and put it on the tax lien, at least some of the family members, you'd have some options, some of the family could take over, you know, pay, pay fines or his debts and tax bills, whatever. But, uh, I think we're going to get a lot of people in court, and we don't want to see that. Not the healthy ones, not the ones that can do it, but many of them that are not able to do it. And, uh.
One day you cut that tree, sell it to, or that tree went to the court.
But the list that you have, you know, you just gave us a report, and, um, those people there are, I mean, we're not, we're not bringing in grandma whose grass is maybe four inches high. These people are bleak, I mean, they're, besides the stench.
And overgrowth and a lot of trash.
And the neighbors complaining about rats and snakes and everything else coming across property lines and all that, I mean, we've.
In any of this, you have, there is discretion that has to be used in, in any, anything you do. But, and, and I'll tell you this, in the year I've been here, most of the cases that I have worked as I was directing are by complaint. I don't get in county court and go right around looking for tall grass and looking for overgrowth, I don't do that. If I did that.
Fill up court.
I would, I don't do that. I'm, I, my, my understanding and my position was that it's complaint driven. So when we see, when I receive a complaint, I go and investigate. And a lot of these, and, and I would have to say that a good number of what I get are foreclosure. People that have been foreclosed on, they've left and that you have to try to hunt down a bank or an attorney's office and get them to do it, and it's, so that's a lot of it. Some of it is, and some of it's trash, I mean, we have people that take trash and stick it in the backyard and let it pile up. And, you know, and then I get calls on that and I go out and I send them fines and I send them letters and, you know, and the people call me, that trash is still there. Yes, sir, I know, I wrote about it, saw it today, and this is what I've done. Why can't you come do it?
Do the dynamics respond?
Some do, some, some trust is, if the sun trust has it, within, within fifteen days it'll be cut. If it's one of these limbing tree type things, good luck.
The trigger, the, the trigger, you taking action, to me, is very important that that's consistent. And I'm glad to hear that you're doing it only by complaint because we don't want to get accused of, we took them to court, but you didn't take this great court. So, using the same trigger, which is a complaint, is very important that we don't, that we're not biased in how we're taking action. So we need to record that, and I'm sure we do, but we need to record those things.
We do, um, and, and we do also respect that, and I would say that eighty percent of the complaints that come in are lies. They don't, and you know it's the neighbor, but they don't want to tell, they don't, the neighbor knew that complaint on. But we still go investigate because if they, it's still, they, they still reached out to the county for help, so it's my job to get help.
Are you familiar with the way, um, municipalities or counties do it?
Different ones do it different ways. I, when I worked in, when I worked in the town of Naxet, everything was criminal. And the town of Kitty Hawk, some things were criminals, some things were.
I know, they're very strict about junk cars and all, you complain, and they, somebody comes and gets them.
And, uh, I mean, that, that is, but on the other hand, they have a fund set up to do that. Different, you know, larger cities, Raleigh and people like, places like that, they all have a fund to take care of.
Well, I, I think, um, I think we certainly need to consult with our attorney.
And Mr. Carver was saying that, and, and Jack, to further answer your question about being, uh, being a very mild thing in court, uh, that is really no mind if some of the other things come before the judge.
And, and, and let me say this, I, and I can tell you, you get to ask you the people I work for, in thirty years of being alone for a month, I would never notice the guy who went in and rid all the tickets. I've used a lot of discretion. I think there are reasons to think sometimes, but you still have to be consistent. And that's the thing, and, and I, and I guess the biggest reason I'm here is I feel frustrated because I'm trying to do a job for the county and I feel like I can't get the job. I'm, I'm not going to put anybody in jail when I cut the grass, that's not really the whole point of this. I'm just saying that we either need to fund the civil side or look at the criminal side. And those are the two options we have, and I, I'm just trying to do the best job for you as I can do it. And I just feel like my hands are tied.
Uh, and is, with my understanding at the very beginning, not only with the nuisance ordinance, but with the junk cars and that was the third one?
Um, the, this is junk yard and junk cars, they're all, it's, they're all.
If we could all do those in a one?
Well, you know, we got a list of what's outstanding, but how many properties have you gone to, given them a letter and did they clean it up?
A lot of them.
You know, we are seeing that, so, so you, you ought to be in the back there. But some of the, some are harder than others.
Right.
And, and those are ones that cause the frustration.
Usually what you see are those that, and a lot of them you'll see over and over and over again because we just, it's the people that were having a tough time getting it. And, and we came out of the win, grass was a crook. Now, I probably, this week, last week alone, I probably had fifteen complaints about grass. And some of them have already been cut, some of them have had letters sent, so it's.
I think the process is working, it's just not a hundred percent. And, you know, one property that I'm familiar with, specifically one thirty-eight, I mean, it was, uh, pretty bad, still bad.
Thirteen million.
But, uh, this is what I'm.
The one that did, I've been by there and, he did do some.
He did send out the, the, the container of them, but, uh, but still, it's still, you know, it's not acceptable. And, uh, to think about it, he doesn't own that much. So, to me, that's a situation where they should refer to the tax, you've done your job, you've, once you send out your three, four, five, whatever the limit is, and you've made your visitation, then it should go to the tax department by way of the manager. And I, I, you know, there's a process.
But, and, and state law only allows us to, my understanding, the way I read the state law is that in order for the lien against the property, it takes a court order, you know, right? For as far as what we're doing.
I understood it.
The way I read, the way I understood it, for us, the, once we find them, in order for us to put that fine against their property as a lien, it has, it takes a court order to do that. We, we can't just do it without court, without a judge saying that you can, that was my understanding of the law when I read it.
If we, if we need to, um, if we need our attorney's consultation on it, um, that's what we need to do, I think. And we could have, we could do that in closed session to where we could, because names could come up, properties, addresses could come up, Mr. Carver could be there, I think it would be helpful, if we could do that in closed session.
And also the planner, I would think, as well, if, well, would we just consider the nuisance ordinance?
I like, what is, what is the general statute you're quoting that, uh?
I'll have you, I'll give it to you, but it's, um, it's the one that authorizes counties and towns to actually do that.
It's in, it's highlighted in your packet. Well, there's two general statutes mentioned.
General statute.
One fifty-three.
One fifty-three.
A.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's, that's about the court.
And the one is one fifty-three A, one twenty-three, and the other one's one fifty-three A, one forty.
I think it may be under the one forty.
That's at the very end.
I didn't bring that one with me.
Lien upon land or premises where public nuisance exists shall be collected as untamed taxes as provided in general statute one fifty-three A dash one forty, as amended.
As a matter of fact, they just redid that over, over that last year, I believe, wasn't it? All right, 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 game over, I got a new copy of that.
I propose a board.
Okay, why does closure the board?
I think we need to, for me, in my perspective, I think we need to take a look at, uh, how we can, uh, put a tax attachment to the property, a lien on the property, uh, by way of the general statute and, and see which one is, uh, most useful.
Okay.
So I didn't think it'd take time.
Uh, I'm glad Mr. Carver brought it in front of us, uh, as are both options.
Yeah, and Jack said, I think we need to discuss this as well, too.
Okay, uh, and we will, uh, direct county manager to set up county, county attorney, invite Mr. Carver, who's already with us, and to go over the general statutes and see what we can do to make. But we do appreciate what you're doing, and you are making a difference. With those who do comply, uh, we all know there are some that take a little bit more nudging.
And I, and I will say that a, a good, a good number do comply, you know, it's not, but it's, there is, it seems like the worst of the, worst of those that don't comply, and everybody riding by and sees it, and my phone rings about it.
So dishonest.
Can we have, can we have yourself on the, on the audience?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, since this will be in closed session, will this get to June meeting or are you looking at a separate meeting?
June.
Good, June.
That's not too long, oh, wait.
October, nine, one.
First Wednesday in the month, we meet, closed sessions, generally in the afternoon. Okay, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, uh, we have, the next item is planning board appointments, I believe there are two vacancies at this time on that, uh, board. One is, uh, one person who's currently serving and seeking a second term.
Uh, gentlemen, another motion that we reap for the pardon.
Governor, another motion that we reappoint Phyllis Hobbs.
Okay, a motion has been made to second that we appoint Phyllis Hobbs for a second term on the planning board.
And I'd like to nominate Joseph Allen.
Okay, let's do one of them, okay?
Not do them all together.
Not do them all together. Okay, all those in favor of Phyllis Hobbs? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Freeman?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to nominate Joseph Allen. Of Hazleton Road.
Up there in Drumhill. Okay, do I hear a second?
My second.
A second has been made, and is...
Commissioner, I did, I read, I read about him, and then as I read about him, I did a little research to see if I did know it, but I, I knew him as a very young man, so I've not seen the property for years of that.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those ready to vote? All those in favor of Joseph Allen? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is he in Michael Allen's program, isn't he?
I don't, I don't know him.
How many years?
You know, what, what, what impressed me is from Gates County and, and worked, worked here, I didn't, didn't know all of that till I was...
The Board of Adjustments appointments, we have, how many?
There's two positions that are available, only one person who is in your packet has applied to that, or if you...
Do we need to, well, would somebody on the planning board, do you think they'd be interested? Or they didn't apply for that, did they?
Maybe we can contact them if you'd like, or we believe it, those are, depending on the planning board. And both of these would be, if I remember correctly, they were both ultimate positions. It is very important that they attend meetings.
Are these an alternate, alternate?
I'll, I'll, I'll nominate Martha Parker. They own a home in Diane Road. I don't know her personally, but I know of them, and, and as an alternate, I think she could probably serve.
Okay, I don't know who that is. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And motions have been made.
This is being a positive judicial appointment, I, I would really like to see someone investigated before we put them on the board. And a couple things on this, I don't know the lady either, I've never heard of her. So I don't have any, and it's, her was also on the board, but I noticed on the address, she has her home address is Diane Road, and then she has a mailing address in Suffolk. And that kind of seems strange. And then the reason she wants to join is to just move things along in a timely manner. And that judicial board doesn't move in a timely manner, it moves in a judicial manner. And it may take some time to, to resolve their correction actions. I just think we need to know who we vote for, and I, I don't have any idea, I don't know her at all.
Do you have any idea on one, they have a mailing address in Suffolk?
They, from what I understand, they moved from Virginia possibly five, six years ago. The house that they live in, the same house that we think about, trying to get for the previous county manager, they were, at one point, they were, they were handed up for You know, there again, if you can get someone, she's the only one that's applied, you know, you had a lot of people that's interested, and you can have someone to select from. I mean, you know, that's up to the board, if you want to put it out there again, you still, you still have any way, from my understanding, the Board of Justice is, is having difficulties now trying to carry out your business because they don't have people there. And so if you don't have anyone that's interested, for whatever reason, you're going to have to put someone up there. And I mean...
She may be fully qualified, I'd just like to have a little investigation and find, just find out something about her before we put her on there. The decisions this board may or not challenge you, unless you go to Superior Court.
Well, I, I understand all that, but I'm just saying, it's been in the papers, no one is, is, has applied for it, it's up to the board, I'm going to live here. Next month, they may not have anybody, and, you know...
They did have the form, they did have a form for their April meeting, and they are not meeting here in another place.
But have we had, probably, passed by that form?
Yes.
I see that she also has a Virginia telephone number.
A lot of people have that. A lot, some telephones, yeah. There again, I, you know, vote how you will. I can charge you, she's probably on her, from my dealings with her, I mean, I'm not ready, you don't have to go into regular against her, because no one else applied. She do have a need to move forward. I think that she would make her decision to the best of her ability. And she does have something, as far as indication, I think, since she complete, having a sausage to graze out, she has some aptitude and educational ability to understand and read and comprehend.
Okay, a motion is on the floor, and a second has been made to appoint Marshall Parker to the Board of Adjustments. That's the motion that is on the floor.
And Mr. Felton's comment is an observation, right? That's an observation from paper on your state.
My, my comment is, well, I have no idea who she is, I don't, I don't know. And I, I don't, I just have a problem with putting somebody on a judicial, part of judicial board, that I have no idea who she is or anything at all about it.
Like I said, I, I know who she is. I mean, I didn't know who, I don't know Allen.
Well, I know Allen.
Yeah, I know who he is, too.
But, you know, based on you having some knowledge of him, I, you know, I have a problem with that.
I thought you said you did, you did not know her personally?
Well, I, I don't know the person personally in the sense of that I know about, all about their background and whatever, except what's put on paper. I, I don't look them through association, but I have met them, I have fought with them. And based on my, my assessment, I'm, I'm saying that she could serve. I'm not saying that there's no one else I look better, or, you know, that we've got to do a better job, I'm not saying that. But I think she could serve.
Madam Chairman, I'll call the board.
Okay, motion, I mean, a call for the vote, Marshall Parker, or the, as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments, correct, as an alternate. But one other question, do you call for a vote? I didn't, I know we tried to be cheerful, frankly. About the... But we call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
No.
And I did not vote, I'm sorry.
It's three to one.
Yes, yes, yeah. Three to one. So we'll point her.
Sometimes we don't have the luxury of... Someone else can hear you, you know?
And, yeah, if these people, if there was an all candidates for planning board, if you can contact them, if they'd be willing to serve on the Board of Adjustments. There were some all candidates, I, I mean, they were willing to serve. And sometimes that, people might not know, I mean, planning, you kind of have a idea of Board of Adjustments, you might not know what that is. Okay, moving along, Board of Elections discussion. Is Mr. Hankinson... Okay, Personnel Board recommendation, excuse me. We are only going to act on number one tonight of these. Number two is, at the table, I sent back, and for additional...
For further clarification?
Yeah, on the steps. Number one, the approval of a salary increase for Warren Curry, who's a IT technician, with a grade eighteen, a grade eighteen step six, or to a grade eighteen step six, to be effective July first, 2016. Warren has been with us for, since 2013, and this is based upon his North Carolina Local Government Certified Government Chief Information Officer certification that he will be receiving this month. And if we, Commissioner Felton and I vote on Personnel Board, this would help bring the salary into line to what it is in surrounding areas. Also, if we have an IT person that is good at a job, you need to try to hold on to them because they are very much in demand. And he works a lot hours, you know, setting up things, technical thing, keep all our computers running, you'll see him all right.
Madam Chairman, I think a motion that we approve, the...
There, excuse me, there's not a motion, it's neither, this is a recommendation from the committee, it just needs action.
Any other comments?
I too have been...
This is coming out of a committee, no, sir, Roberts rules is if it's coming out of committee, then it does not need a, it does not need a motion, it is the recommendation of the committee.
I too have certainly seen what Personnel Board's saying, and shout out the chairman of the case.
We need a motion to take action.
No, sir, you don't need a motion to take action, you just need to call the question.
Except the, except or deny the recommendation. Jordan, you can.
I'll be... You need to what, yeah?
Is this a accept or reject the recommendation?
It is a recommendation, you just need to call the question because the motion, as you would like, if you would like to phrase it like that, is to approve the salary increase for Warren Curry to a grade eighteen step six, to be effective July first, 2016.
Well, that is a motion, a board can't act without a motion. This is how we, we don't, we don't take that.
No, sir, according to Roberts rules, I had checked them last time.
We don't work on Roberts rule, we work on this here.
And according to that, you can also do this.
We'll work on it in the show.
At, at, we need your books, sir. Because this is what, same process that we followed for the last meeting. It says, "In reference to Roberts Rules of Order, to the extent not provided for and and not conflicting with the spirit of these rules, the Chair shall refer to Roberts Rules of Order to resolve procedural questions."
In the conduct of the meeting, if you look in there, I believe you'll find that
There are also procedural motions that you can follow, so it's up to the Chair to
But it comes from either committee, generally in organizations I've worked with, if a motion comes from a committee, we don't need a second or anything to, for it.
Madam Chairman, I recommend that we take a recommendation from the Personnel Committee, we take action when we recommend it.
Okay. Is everybody clear what we're doing? All those in favor say aye, or aye. All those opposed? Moving along, the next one is the Board of Elections Office Discussion. I don't believe Mr. Hankinson is here.
No, ma'am.
Did he send a letter?
No, the last response that I have is dated May the ninth, and about, if you remember, they were requested to have some information to us by April the twenty-ninth for the May sixth meeting. And on May the third, I sent him a reminder of that, and after the meeting, he responded on May the ninth, he said, "I've just received your most recent letter in regards to staff hours. I'm still working together with the information that you requested in the previous letter to mail. I will try my best to have the information by then, but I cannot say at this time if I will have it by the Gates County Board of Commission meeting on May sixteenth, due to the fact I am waiting on response from the State Board of Elections. I am sure you are aware, I assume this position after many decisions have been made by the former Board of Elections chair members. I do not take these things lightly, and since I have received no, no turn off from the previous chair, I want to take the time to make sure that I can gather all the necessary information and history on this subject." And it was signed by Charles Hankinson.
Okay, so we still have not heard, and we have given him kind of...
The first letter was, excuse me, was sent on April the seventh.
April the seventh, we would send a letter on May...
They sent an email on May the third, and the, excuse me, May, yes, May the third, and we still have not heard back.
What is the pledge of the board?
What more can we do? I mean, our, our vote record don't, what we essentially asked was, tell us how many hours the election board is supposed to be open, and how many hours the record is supposed to spend in there. Is that what it was?
Correct.
That information we obtained by calling the state, can you do that?
I can attempt to get that information. Because, the letter that was sent May the fifth said, "The board would like to meet with you to address staffing requirements and hours of operations for Elections Office for both full-time and part-time. And if you are not able to attend, please contact me as soon as possible, so we can schedule a time to meet with the board."
I still would like, would like to see them to make, to ask them some questions, and I still, I think we still want to know that information. We might find it ourselves, but we also need to hear from them. Would it be in the interest of the board to request that, to reach out to them one more time and say... one more time and say, "We also want this clip here for our first meeting in June, our only meeting in June"?
Have we received any documentation from them at all?
No, sir, not regarding that or the MOU, which was mentioned in the first letter.
The MOU has been hanging out there for a long time. And they're getting ready, I mean, at, sometime for someone to move into the EIC building.
Guess all we can do is send them the letter and hope for June. Remember, you'd have me arrested if we didn't was late.
We will send the sheriff. Okay.
I think, I think we need to recognize that we've got to use some diplomacy between the departments. It's not always a situation where you can direct someone to do something, especially when they are an agency, uh, that's operating under the authority and we have to provide them with funding. I think we need a little bit more diplomacy and courtesy, uh, in communicating with the various agencies that we're dealing with. And, uh, I don't see that happening. I do not.
Well, I, they also have a responsibility to, um,
Too hard to make, right?
Well, no, they do have a responsibility to, um, with that budget, that budget is doing things in a timely way, um, and we have not made unreasonable demands, we just ask some questions.
And we can do that, but in order to get what you want, sometimes it takes diplomacy. And, uh, you gotta work with people. You know, that's, that's not something that's, that's written. You know, we got general statutes, we got rules and regulations, you can enforce those of an agency that's independently operated. We have to work with them to try to accomplish what we need, and I think the issue here is that we don't know what their hours are, we don't know what their requirements are. And, uh, we're up here finding out, I judge it. Diplomatically. Can't withhold the budget. Can't withhold, withhold the budget.
And we haven't said anything about that, but certainly they are answerable to us. They are an department in our county government.
What can we do, withhold the budget?
No, certainly, um, I would expect any of our departments, if we requested information, to provide us with that information.
True, but if they don't, the Sheriff Department has, has the department to run and operate. The Board of Elections has the department to run and operate, just like we have a calendar to run and operate, but they are held responsible as to how they carry it out. So diplomacy, you have to learn to work with.
So we never ask any questions?
No, I'm not saying don't ask.
Okay, and that's all we've done, is ask questions, and we can't get answers.
Well, if you're not getting answers, it's, 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 it's a reason why we're not getting answers. So what do you do if you stand back and, and say, "Well, you did treat them right now"? We get the answers, we work with the diplomatic. Maybe as a chair, maybe you can go and talk to the same. This is what we need, and we really need that.
I'll certainly go talk to him. I'll go talk to him before our next meeting and see if we can get him to appear. And, um, so. Okay, sell of real, real property process.
I have proposed in your, I don't know if you know the information. Oh, okay, the process for selling property. And this is actually very timely and quick, and this morning it's on the spot, she talked about this this past week in her clerk's class, but she said this is the information, and she said that first we have to know, of course, the amount that the person is offering to the county, and we have to determine if that's a fair price, and then we do have to follow that process that's outlined, and making sure that it is properly advertised. We do have to take a deposit from the person who makes the first bid, and it has to follow all of the guidelines for advertising.
If I'm reading this correctly, if we can do one of the two through five, we cannot do number one, private negotiation. And two, advertising for sealed bids and negotiating public auction or exchange. Is that, am I reading my question?
For which one, I'm sorry?
Private sale.
Private, private negotiation and sale, that, that is not a, not one of the processes to be used in, in peace property we're discussing.
Correct, that's my understanding.
The sealed bids or public auctions or
Right.
We need property to be built in one of them. Last one listed. Number one.
There's a sort of a limitation on their mind, right?
Oh, yeah, okay, so you, yeah, okay, I guess. It's still says, can, maybe sold on any, not a whole, then the private negotiation.
And this is a one for us?
Yes, at this stage of the game, I would think so.
Where's the bag of, off the table, right?
I don't remember if you verify it informally, it would have to be a formal bid.
Or what is the tax, tax bag of?
I don't have that with me.
A self-tax card, but I don't have one set.
I've seen it, too, but I don't have.
So it can't be much.
Yeah, I had it in my pocket.
It was, Mr. Felton had it in?
No, I did not bring it back to my
You don't remember?
No, trying to have the tax code, I had the amount.
He had the amount.
The amount, but it wasn't much. Okay, so, um,
So just need to decide on which method of sale.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with the proper procedure to sell this with a sealed bid.
Motion's been made that we use a sealed bid to sell property that is owned by the county. Do I have a second?
I'll swing the motion.
Motion has been made, it's seconded, that we, um, use a sealed, sealed bid method to sell property owned by the county, any discussion?
Commissioner Felton?
Yes, sir.
No access to that property?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's all.
It's land law, and the amount of land is?
Eight tenths of a acre.
Eight tenths of a acre.
Look at that, sorry.
Call them though.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we'll follow the sealed bid process. Okay, well, I do appreciate those of you who have stayed to their end, uh, well, their end couple session, uh, and we do appreciate it, and we have Commissioner, you, uh, you or Mr. Felton always comments by having people from his area here, but I have three people here from our area. So I think I, my three beat your two.
I know, but two would have to be medical reasons.
I'm with Jack.
And they win.
Oh, you and Jack, okay, my three and Jordan.
But they win, I'm still claiming. We're gonna point that out when it come my turn.
So we do appreciate y'all coming, uh, I hope y'all have been, got an education on, uh, the process, government does not move swiftly, it is a slow tedious process. And, uh, do we have any comments from the citizens? Is the town's citizens comments? No, no, no.
All I can say is you guys had my deep representation.
And we do appreciate you for your years of service to the rescue squad. We hope that you are
It's never an easy job, really, you know.
No, it's not, but it's not, I would both of you.
I'm more appropriate at this time or some other time, but we were talking about the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Also, the ordinance passed before that about delinquent buildings, I think it goes back to years before, I guess it's still on the books, that could be combined in with it.
Are you talking about the condemned?
Cause the, like, the, one of the, the purest place that was
That could really get into a real expensive money for the county, too, to swap it, so. Just let the link back.
Take the down lines, we're cheap.
But, um, when that property was sold, we recouped that amount.
Okay.
Recouped, uh, because a lien was put on property.
We all had some success in that area.
Yes, we all have a little bit, we've had chip properties, but it's a lengthy process, it's not swift.
You gotta dot your i's and cross your t's, but we do.
But in the end, we can get that money. And, um, well, I'll, and just right at the end, I'll start at the end again.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, we appreciate everybody being here. We certainly, and I, as I've said before, as I always recognize, that we do share your visions, and we listen to them, and you give us calls and make suggestions. Uh, as you see, we make decisions based upon some of those visions, and some of the things that come forth to us, and, uh, some of those decisions are not easy, and, uh, we don't always agree on the decisions that we make. Uh, so, thank you for being here again, and pass on to
For a second, I can't claim anybody but you tonight, but I appreciate you being here.
You pay up for that.
All right, thank you, man. Gwen does spend a lot of time with you. But I appreciate y'all coming, and, and, you, there were no comments made from the audience tonight, but as Greg was saying, that's always very important, and we appreciate all the comments made, and, and just, that's what we, we're here to do with, with best for the whole county, and the way we learned that is listening to your comments. Thank you.
I too thank everyone for coming, and, uh, hopefully we accomplish what we needed to do tonight, and, uh, but if we didn't, we'll try it again. So, uh, I hope you have a great weekend.
Well, Gwen had it better than none. So I'll, I'll share you with you this night. Appreciate everybody coming out, Sue, appreciate you dragging Andy out here, and Jordan, good sitting, sir. And, um, it is good to see everybody coming in, we'll have more fun next time.
Well, I too thank you for coming, um, you know, call friends, tell them to come, it's an exciting evening, it's free entertainment, uh, but I think you can see, as I just stated, that government moves at its own pace, it's sometimes not as fast as I would want it to be, uh, but there is something that exists, slow and sure, and sometimes it seems like we beat pace to death, but there's a purpose to that, we need to make sure that we look at all sides of it. Um, we all have different viewpoints, and it's important to listen to each other and to see the all of a person's viewpoint, and so we try to do what we think is best for the county. We get it right sometimes, we get it wrong sometimes, I'm sure, as well. But listen, thank you for coming, um, we meet again first Wednesday in June, and hope to see you here and bring a friend. Okay, we'll take it, uh, do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
A move?
Second.
Motion to be made, second to enter to closed session, I have to pursue it to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, all of that for legal, economic, development, real estate, and personnel matters. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And we'll take a minute's stretch and we'll A motion, do I have a motion to, um, come on at the closed session?
Some move?
Second.
Motion to be made, properly settled, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Okay, motion is brought, made, second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.